Welcome, everyone. It's 6 o'clock. I know we have a small group. Maybe that's a good sign that we're doing our job here with regards to redistricting. So I appreciate all of you attending. We have a nice presentation tonight. We have been working on a number of maps, and I think we've narrowed it down to a couple, and they'll talk about it tonight. As you probably all remember, Chris Meyer, who used to be our city attorney and city clerk and is now retired but doing some consulting work for us, as you can see, he's very happy because he's retired. He'll be helping us tonight. And we have our consultants, the Mathers. You're from DC area, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So they're actually, they're not familiar with the area in a way that's good because you kind of looked at it as a clean slate and really gave us some great sage advice. And so we really do appreciate that. So I'm going to turn it over to Denise Archibald, our city clerk, and she's going to kind of walk us through what we're going to do tonight. And I'm here to listen to comments. Again, it's a small group, but I can tell it's a mighty group. So I appreciate any comments we have tonight. And if you have none, as I walk out, I'll be happy to chat with you about that as well. So I'll turn it over to Denise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you, everyone, again, for being here. This is the round two redistricting meeting for districts two and three. And I will talk a little bit about the process. If you were at the first round of meetings that we did in January and heard some of this part of this process, but just in case you weren't there, we are using the same process that we've used before in the last three redistrictings in 1990, 2000, and 2010. As the councilwoman mentioned, we did hire forage consulting and training from the Washington DC area with Sam and Priti Mathur. And they were selected through a procurement process that was approved by the city council. And we did have our initial round of first round meetings for redistricting in June. At that time, we did provide information about the process, what the current data was related to the census, and how everyone can participate. The participation included receiving comments either by email or the website, which we are currently still receiving. And so if you would like to make a comment, you're welcome to do that online, or you can call us as well. And persons were able to submit maps as well. So the maps, people could create their own redistricting map and submit them, and that was available through August 1st. So since August 1st, the consultant did take those submissions and the feedback received from round one of the community meetings. And they have come up with, as the councilwoman mentioned, alternative A map and alternative B map for consideration. And what we're looking for now during the second round of community information is to receive from you what you think about these maps, not so much picking one map over the other potentially, but also more what you like about each map and why, and what you don't like about each map and why. And that way, once this round two is over of the community meetings, then the consultants will then draft the final map for council consideration. And then that will be voted on here in September by the council. And then they will become effective the 1st of January 2024 or the November 2024 election. And there are handouts available outside. There is our website, phoenixredistricting.com, and all of our information is there. And with that, I will give you your feedback.
Good evening. My name is Priti Mathur, and I'm going to be showing you the PowerPoint and some of the slides we have already talked about. We have shown them to you in round one meetings, but that would be just a refresher to kind of take you to round two presentation as I'm going to show you now. So here we talk about the 2010 census and the 2020 census. So the current districts, they were made 10 years ago based on the 2010 census, and back then, everything was well balanced. The population was 1.4 million, and the ideal population for each of the eight districts was 180,704. And now with 2020 census, the city of Phoenix has grown, and the population, as reported by the Bureau of Census, is 1.6 million. And that leads our target population for each district to be 201,000. And when we look at the 2020 data, our current districts are no longer in compliance with our redistricting criteria, which means that we have to redraw our districts. So, and this is the information here, this is our target, 201,000. So any district which is less needs to gain, and any district which is more has to lose. So here, we are sitting in district two and district three. So you can see that district two has adapted more, has adapted more, and district three has the less. So now I'll quickly show you the redistricting requirements. And these were the requirements. They are posted on the website, and when the community created their maps, they were supposed to follow these same redistricting criteria. So we have equal population. Ideally, each district should have the same number of people, but of course, that's never possible. So there is like a maximum deviation threshold, which should be less than 5%. Now, maximum deviation, like we defined before, is the difference between the most populated and the least populated districts. And then the other requirement is that each district should be so close to the ideal population that it should not be more than, over 1%. So those were the requirements that we followed, and that were given to the community to create their maps. And then compliance with the Voting Rights Act, and then the district should be compact, contiguous, and that we should draw the districts such that we do not draw the incumbents out of their districts. Now, many a time, people say, why did we use West Streets and West Streets to draw as boundaries? We actually used the county precincts. And those were provided to US community to use the county precincts to create your new districts. So those were the rules of the game. So now what we do is talk a little bit about the public submissions. So on June 29th, soon after the first round of meetings, the community was provided with the opportunity to draw the districts the way they thought were the best representation for the cities. So we did get 36 map submissions, and there were 16 community members who made multiple submissions, and that is how we got 36 map submissions. We evaluated them all because they all had to comply with the redistricting criteria. And then finally, we have two plans that we are going to present to you today. And what our evaluation criteria was based on our redistricting criteria. So we looked at precinct splits, we looked at maximum deviation, we looked at representation of minorities, incumbency, and based on all that, we are here to present two plans to you. We call them alternative A and alternative B. As you can see, there are two maps here, and they are on the poster boards, and those are alternative A and alternative B. Alternative A was based on the feedback that we got from round one meetings. And alternative B was completely developed by a community member. We did make some minor tweaks so that it would completely comply with the redistricting criteria. And here, you can see some numbers down here. We made sure that alternative A and alternative B followed the maximum deviation guidelines. Then we also looked at precinct splits. We did not want to have too many precincts split, so we looked at that. And then we looked at the compactness core, as well as the number of precincts moved. We did not want to move, just totally change the district, so we wanted to preserve the core of the district. So now with that, I'm going to present to you alternative A. Okay, in alternative A, let's go back. Okay, I don't know why this is showing up here, but regardless, this is an overview of alternative A. And there are, you can see each precinct which has been moved from its current assignment. And you can see the change in the syntax that we used. So D2, that means D2, comma, 3. It means that it's currently split, and it's now being assigned to D3. So I don't want you to strain your eyes on this map. This is an overview map. We have a large map over there. Also, on the website, we have a place where it says interactive maps under redistricting plans. You can go there, and you can zoom in, and you can see each and every street there. All right? So all we need to take away from this slide is that there are 22 precincts which were changed or which were moved from one district to another. So we also wanted to make sure that the majority minority population, districts currently, as you know, there are four Hispanic majority districts and four non-Hispanic white majority districts. And we wanted to maintain that in our alternative A and B, both at total population as well as voting age population. So we have four, four. And now we look at alternative B. And once again, this is an overview map, and you can see that there are 33 precincts which were assigned to different districts. So with that, we checked the majority population, and it is the way it is right now. So we've maintained the four majority Hispanic and four majority non-Hispanic white districts. So now what we will do is we'll just focus on districts two and three. And first, we'll talk about district two. And you can see that here, on one side, we have alternative A and alternative B on the other side. And the black and white line is your current district, and the red and the color field is what is being proposed. So here, you can see in this, in alternative A, we are proposing four changes, and alternative B is proposing eight changes. And if you look at it, you can see the changes right here, 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 and you can see changes here and here. So these are for district two. And what we will do is we will zoom in a little bit in alternative A, and we can show you that we have the Bluefield, Grover's, and Vickiya precincts, which are right here. So they were currently, they are currently split between D2 and D3, and Vickiya was totally in D2, and it's now being assigned to D3. So you can see the changes here, up north here. And then we have the Hillary precinct, and this precinct was split once again in two and three, and now it's completely in D2. So these are the changes for district four in alternative A. Now we move on to alternative B, and you can see the changes here. So some changes are kind of similar, where we have Bluebird, but at the same time, we have Bluebird. Bluefield is the same as alternative A, but you can see Bluebird here, then you can see the Lola precinct, Rockwood, Rose Garden, and Vickiya. And then we have Orange Tree precinct, which is currently in D2, and it's being assigned to D3. So the purpose of showing you these slides was to zoom in because when we talk about these precincts, you know, if you're not familiar with them, you want to know, okay, where is it? So we had these zoomed in parts so you could see a place where these precincts are. And now we move on to district three. And if you recall, district three needed population, so you can see that district three is gaining some here. So here, these are the precincts that we got. These were split, so you can see Bluefield, Glen, Grover's, Hillary. So here, and then basically, we are saying that there are seven changes in alternative A and nine changes in alternative B. And these PowerPoints are going to be on the website, so later on, you can go and see. So here, let's look at alternative A in detail. So we have Bluefield, Grover's, Vickiya, and you can see them here. And then we have the Hillary precinct, which is being put together. And of course, we have some exchanges down here with district five. And actually, D3 is giving this precinct to D6, which is Glen. So you can see the changes over here. So you can see Glen, you can see Sunny High, you can see Towny. So each of these precincts, which is listed here, you can see it on the zoomed in map. Okay? Moving on to alternative B, in district three, you can see the changes, and once again, the same format. We have these northern precincts that were moved. We have them listed here. And then we have Orange Tree, and then we have right here, this part between of district three, where we have some exchanges with D5 and D6. So they are all listed over here. Okay? Now what we do is we present to you two and three together so you can see. And we have put in some streets here so you can see some changes here in alternative A. You can see more changes in alternative B. Then you can see some changes here, some changes here. And then the overall stats, that overall, alternative A just moves 22 precincts, and alternative B moves 33 precincts, and the maximum deviation is 1.38, and here, it's 1.90. So like Denise said, we would like to get your comments so that this gets even better for the community. So please let us know your comments. You can go on the website, and you can, phoenixredistricting.com, and send your comments. Many a time, we get these comments, I like plan A or I like plan B, but better would be, you know, if you would explain why, or what is, what can be done to make it better. So with this, I'm going to open up for questions and comments, and I want to thank you for your time.
All right. I believe we have, is this on? Okay, I believe we have one. We do have one speaker card, but we're more than happy to hear from others. So Tim Kenobi, we'll let Tim go first. Oh, you have a card. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Tim Kenobi with United Phoenix Firefighters.
You're tall, we know.
You can pull the microphone out.
So we represent 2,700 members, many of whom live in Phoenix, and specifically districts two and district three. And we just wanted to be here and comment and thank the staff and consultants for their work on this. We wanted to be involved in this to ensure transparency, that communities' voices were heard, specifically firefighters and paramedics, business owners, our leadership. And we do believe that that was achieved by your work, your transparency, and so we appreciate all of your work. We did submit a map, and it looks most like alternative A. And we support that because it does reduce split precincts by a large margin and maintains the integrity of the current districts and compactness. So again, thank you for all of your work and your time.
Thank you. With this new map, I'm going to lose one of my favorite stations, as you know, at 7th Avenue in Glendale. But you know I will be there to support and make sure that it's in the next bond election. I know there's a lot of work that needs to be done at that fire station, so, but I appreciate everything you do. Tim lives in my district.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the firefighters at Station 20 appreciate you and all of your advocacy. So thank you.
Absolutely. So Andre Williams, how are you?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Actually, I'm not sure if I have a comment because this map looks different than what I have. Is where district five cuts off, is that 15th Avenue? The green?
Yes.
I imagine you're from district five, everybody. Sorry for hijacking your...
Five is the green.
Yeah, five is the green.
And blue?
Blue is three.
Blue is three.
Blue is three, and yellow is two.
Okay, so is the green...
So you're down in the Royal Palm area.
Is the green going to 15th Avenue? Because on here, it looks like it's going to, this is for alternative A. Looks like it's going to 19th Avenue on the map that I have here.
I can check.
Where are the Viger? You've got the Viger maps.
It's going further west to 19th Avenue.
Alternative A.
On alternative A.
Okay, so if that is the case...
I'm just pulling up, which one are you interested in, alternative A?
Ah, yes, please.
I just...
And it would be the southern portion of where five and three meet.
Sometimes it's kind of hard to...
Now, the reason why I'm actually concerned is, because I provided feedback in round one. I ran for city council member, district five, in 2020. And in round one, the map showed that I was mapped out of the district. And I'm also planning on running for city council in 2024. So I make sure that those, that feedback was taken into consideration during the first round.
My understanding it was, I am, sir, I actually didn't know you lived in Royal Palm. I know we had met for coffee, and I don't know why I thought you lived somewhere else. But I do think the comments were considered. I'm looking at Ginger. I know she had to drive all the way down from City Hall, so traffic is not good coming up here, but bless her heart. Maybe you can explain. I know we talked a little bit.
It's on. Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Stark. Apologies, everyone, we had back-to-back meetings beyond five, so, and trying to get up here.
Traffic.
Yes. But my name is Ginger Spencer, deputy city manager. So good afternoon, good to see you again, sir. So you were at the district five round one meetings, and you did communicate, I believe at the time, if I'm going from memory, you had communicated you were in the Sunny High precinct, I believe is what you communicated to us. And you did mention that your concerns with being drawn out of your current precinct and your interest in being able to run for council district five. At that meet, so we did take that into consideration. The one thing, though, when we talk about legal requirements with redistricting, as well as our guidelines that we're using as principles, when we talk about making sure we're not drawing out incumbents out of their current precincts or districts, it applies to the current council member, the current incumbent. So it does not apply to any individuals who are running for office or any competition. But it was duly noted, we did take that into consideration. But I believe in map A, Sunny High, is still being recommended to be moved from district five into district three. Yes.
Okay, so if alternative A is adopted, I would be mapped out of district five. Oh, is this on?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear it. We can hear, I know.
Which would mean that the 9,000 individuals that voted for me in 2020 would be, quote, disenfranchised, right? Because they found a voice in me in 2020. So if I never showed up to round one, right, and provided that feedback, that'd be one thing. But since I did show up, right, to map me out of the district, knowing that these individuals may lose a voice, is knowingly and willingly removing that voice from them. So it's, to me, it seems like, you know, this is a very arbitrary process. Hey, you know, go draw a map. If we like your map, we'll adopt that map. I'm pretty sure that my concerns are probably the closest to a US constitutional concern as you can, that you've probably come across thus far. I can't imagine there being any other reason that could result in disenfranchising voters. Maybe there has been another reason. I don't know. But this, I think, I think this is a really serious issue, given that I provided that feedback during the round one.
And the only thing, so I understand your concerns. The only other thing that I will add is when we originally presented our Plan A, it was all based on data. So we didn't know, your concerns had not been expressed at the time. So I don't want you to think that this was intentional, that anyone intentionally drew you out of that precinct. This was all based on data, and then trying to get us within the framework of being under 5% maximum standard deviation and looking at all of the precincts throughout the city, looking where precincts were split, and then where it best made sense to make changes based on a data, data standpoint. And we do have our attorneys, we do have our consultants, so we're not going to do anything intentionally to draw anyone out of the district. And it was noted, and we did note that, and we did look at it, we asked the questions again to our attorneys just to make sure that we did not misstep anywhere. But I just wanted to say, when that was originally proposed, we had not received your comments yet, and we weren't aware of it, but we did go back and we double-checked.
Okay.
Yes. And we did have, and I brought that up in briefings and that sort of thing, too. And we did have councilmembers who did understand that as well and were concerned, but then at the end of the day, for all the numbers, this is where we landed.
Maybe I can ask a question, and I don't mean to put Chris on the spot, because I know you know a lot about election law. So if he decided he still wanted to run, and he wanted to run in district five, and you, I'm fine if you want to run against me in district three, if you get, if you end up in district three, I'm fine with that, too, Andre. I know Andre, he's a good man. But could he start running, and then if he were, let's say, to be elected, could he then relocate in district five to represent five? I know in Congress, you can do that. I just don't know about city elections. That's why I'm asking.
The city code, as far as running for council requires, is that the time of your nomination and throughout your tenure that you reside in the district. So technically, you could start running for council, and then, but you have to move into the district by the time of your nomination, which would be by the time you're certified now, when you file your nomination petition. So yes, you could run in the district. Also, I just wanted to mention that there is another factor here that really drove why this, why this change was proposed, and as Ginger said, and nothing to do with you because we didn't even know that at the time. Sunny High precinct is currently split down the middle on 15th Avenue between district two and, or district three and district five. And we've been hearing from that neighborhood, and several people submitted comments, that they wanted to be put back together for, for the industry three. So that's really why there wasn't any other change made to adjust your times. We obviously get conflicting comments from individuals, and we have to try to balance them.
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, the reason that you specified that, you know, community members just may want to be together in the same district is sort of arbitrary, is sort of like, it's just a, you know, feel-good, hey, this will be nice, right? What I'm saying is, my reason is more constitutional-based, right? Especially when I provided that feedback during round one, right? So if we go with this map, it just... So if we go with this map, the decision to go with this map is, is, you know, it's, we knew, right, but we were still willing to disenfranchise these voters, right? There was 9,000 residents who actually voted for him and I'm fighting to still be their representation for the 2024 election. But now they're going to say, oh, what happened to Andre Williams? Well, he was mapped out of the district, even though he provided that feedback. Right? So I don't think there's any other reason that you guys come across during this whole process that is that close to a U.S. constitutional violation. I will have to pursue a lawsuit just to make sure that this doesn't happen. So if I was, if I was everyone here, I would reject alternative A, right? Knowing that there's voters in district five that hope they won't be able to vote for me moving forward if we adopt alternative A.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce?
Yeah, I don't need to step up the mic, you can hear.
Not your voice. I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
I like the alternative A, but I still have a problem. It looks like Royal Palm Village, as we call it, but you know how far away the group is still. And these two are looking at this map, we're split still, are we not? Or my, this map back here, even with my glasses on, it's like real, it's hard to see. And see Towny up there, but then right in the road there, it looks like we're still, and part of this is in five.
And Bruce, what are the boundaries of that area that you're describing, the Royal Palm Village?
That would be 19th Avenue, Norbert, 19th and Dunlap, over seven, that'd be Dunlap in order.
Northern is here, central is here, and Dunlap is here, and 19th is here. We did look at the definition of Palm, Royal Palm, and this is, this is the area that is over here, which is no longer split and it is completely in D two.
My mistake, I'm one street off, I thought that was 19th Avenue there, but that's obviously must be 23rd or something.
This is 19.
Yeah, okay, then we're in, okay, great.
Also, I haven't, sorry, I haven't accounted. So I forgot to mention that I actually was approved in my campaign finance for district five months before this process began. So the city's manager's office, the clerk's office, approved me for district five to run, and I've been campaigning since I've been approved.
And Andre, I just wanted to clarify, so thank you for that. What you're talking about is filing your statement of organization, which is a requirement of the code if you're accumulating a certain amount of expenses or contributions to run for a campaign. However, that's, that has, that does not make you a candidate. You are a candidate the minute you file your nomination paperwork, and so that's not until May of 2024. So as an example, if for some reason, you know, you decide that you either, you know, let's say that you end up redistricted and you decide that you're going to run for that current district, then you would just amend your statement of organization because you're not technically filed yet as a candidate. So filing does not occur until May of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comment? Are there any other comments? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
I'm pretty ignorant about this stuff, so when I'm thinking about precincts, I'm thinking about police. So as far as, what is this precinct? What is Palomino area? What precinct is that?
Palomino is district two. And Jim and I had talked about Palomino and I told him if, if he, because he had more population than I had with the new census that I would be happy to look at, at Palomino, but I think he was okay with representing him. So it's still in his district in the new maps.
What is, what is the precinct? Is it, is that the same thing as a district?
Those are, those are voting precincts, so those are the voting precincts that Merco of County has established.
Okay, does it have a name? I believe it's Palomino in that particular area.
Yeah. It's Palomino, and I think you're sunny.
I'm sunny side.
Side, yeah.
So I'm right across the street from there.
Right. And I'm on the other side.
Right. Wherever it happens, it's Palomino, sort of kind of has an influence on, on my neighborhood. That's why I'm sort of interested in that.
Yeah, so Palomino, I believe under, under this alternative A, it's still the same.
It's the same.
It's the same, correct.
So it's been the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes, Bruce?
What's the next step? I got A, we got B, does it go back to the citizens and then it comes to the city council?
Thank you for that question. Yes, this will now be presented, the consultant will take these comments from this round of community meetings, and then they will present a final either one or two maps to the city council as a whole, so that they can vote on that map. And then if they approve that, then those boundaries are the new boundaries for Phoenix, for the districts, and they will become effective January 1st of 2024. We are planning on going to the full council during the September 26 policy meeting is what we're trying to do at this time.
Thank you.
Hey, Koshia.
Yes, tell me.
Alternative, between alternative A and alternative B on district three, it seems that alternative B is much larger than A, or is it just the way it's printed?
Yeah.
Can you talk about the differences between A and B?
It has to do with population. I did try to get as much of Bell Road as I could, because Jim used to dip down into Bell Road.
Right.
And because we now have the Bell Road Business Alliance, I was trying to unify
So here, if you would like, I can just show you the changes. Basically, these are the changes for alternative B. It seems like alternative B is going a little bit further north. It's taking areas from D one, D two, actually, yeah, so you can see here that it's happening. So we have the Taro precinct, can I show you around it? So here you can see that. So here you can see how alternative B goes further up.
Okay.
Yeah, so just differences there, you can see it goes up here, then there are these precincts here, these are the changes in alternative B. And you can see that D three goes down here, but those are now being picked up by D five and D six.
I myself would like alternative A, but it.
So here you can see that there are seven changes in alternative A and alternative B has nine changes, so.
Either way, you're stuck with me, Tony.
No problem. Thank goodness.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Well, I'll be happy to stick around a couple minutes if anyone else has any just individualized comments to share with us. So thank you so much for coming.
I'd like to thank everybody for all the hard work they've done on this.
Oh, they have.
We appreciate that, as citizens. Make my life easier.
And we like that you volunteer and help our police department, so thank you.
I'm just like worn into it, you know, I've done so many years.
Oh, yeah, you were. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.